And I'd like to welcome everybody to the work session of August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two of the Limestone County Commission. Ellen, do we have any public comment?
We do. Mr. Ronnie Watts.
Mr. Watts, if you don't mind stepping up here to the microphone, please, sir.
I thank y'all very much for letting me have this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir.
I've been in Limestone County since nineteen eighty-seven, and I love this county. It's a very, you know, the very best place I've ever lived. And, uh, but it's growing. The county's growing. It's going leaps and bounds. It's one of the growingest counties. It is the growingest county, I think, in Alabama. And I'm just concerned about the road situation, about the, you know, the roads, the back roads and stuff like that. Because I travel these roads all the time. I'm a builder, and I go all over the place. And about everywhere I go, it seems like the roads are really in bad condition. Okay? Uh, I've talked with Mr. Sammett about Sharp Road, and that road down there, I travel that quite often, and it's tearing my truck up. They'll go down there and patch it, but patches here and there. Then when I drive over it, all the gravel and the tar and stuff comes up on my truck. And that's one of the roads that's really in dire need of repair. But there's a lot of other ones out here that are in need, in bad need of repair. And us being the growingest county, uh, it would be nice if we could fix these roads up and kind of get in there with the growth, because the growth is coming whether we like it or not. And so we might as well do something about the highways, you know, the roads, especially the, you know, the main travel roads. And a lot of these back roads are, you know, the ones that's really in bad shape, like Sharp Road, needs to be something done with. Mr. Sammett told me that, uh, maybe he could get in there by August or September and start working on that road and kind of smooth it out and make it better. Uh, I hope that happens. And I'm looking to Mr. Sammett to hopefully do that for us. Okay? And, uh, so that's, that's the main thing I was wanting to talk about was, uh, since y'all could get some more funding or more, more work on the roads. Because this has been the growingest county like it is, I think something needs to be done with them. And I'd, I'd appreciate that very much. Okay?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Watts.
Mr. Chairman, if I might-
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I've just, Watts, I've discussed it with our, our, well, I know you're busy on the phone, but anyway, we've discussed the issue with the engineer, and we're gonna look at strip patching. So, uh, we'll level that thing up and try to get something done with it.
Thank you, Mr. Watts. Thank you, Darrell. We got anybody else?
Yes, Brian Lorge.
Mr. Lorge.
Good morning.
How you doing today, Brian?
I'm doing good. In the past several months, I've spoken to you about two issues of interest to me. One is the recycling center, and one is the animal shelter. I'm happy to hear. I think progress is being made in both of those. On the agenda today is the approval of Kerry Chalmers as the recycling specialist. I've also heard Dr. Pittman is open to extending at least temporarily the animal shelter lease. This is good news on both fronts. However, in both cases, I consider this the beginning of this effort rather than the end. Coincidentally, I ran into Ms. Chalmers at the animal shelter last Friday. We had a good conversation, and she seems to have plans for a comprehensive recycling program that will cover cardboard, plastics, glass, metals, and hazardous waste. And the good news is it sounds like a lot of these may be self-sustaining. However, if some of these programs are not, I encourage the commission to provide resources necessary to have a comprehensive program. The shelter extension means we won't have a loss of service, which makes me very happy. However, again, I think this is a temporary solution. The existing solution is too small for the number of animals they're handling, and it's not in good condition. I'd like the commission to investigate other possible facilities that may better meet the needs before putting more money into Dr. Pittman's facility. My preference would be for a county-owned facility that could be contracted out to operate. The operator would not necessarily have to be a veterinarian. Um, they could contract with some of the local vets for veterinary services, and I'm told some vets may even donate time to that, right, if it's not a full-time job. Um, I think this would allow for better accounting of the funds that we put into animal shelters. You could break out, know what goes to rent, what goes to utilities, what goes to insurance, how much goes to vet care, and how much goes to pay employees. Um, so I'd like to just encourage you to look at other options. I say, I'm very happy it's not, the whole existing facility's not closing, but I'd like to look something better for them.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Anybody else, Ellen?
No further comments.
All right. Thank you. Um, first on the agenda today for the commission meeting, we'll have approved the minutes from August the first of twenty twenty-two. Anybody got any discussion with the minutes? All right. Next thing on here will be to pay claims in amount of nine hundred forty-nine thousand, twenty dollars and twenty-four cents. Anybody got any discussion with that? All right. Um, then we have no resolutions and orders. Contracts, agreements, and grants, we have three. First one will be to approve an addendum to the contract between Limestone County and Ergon Incorporated for the Limestone County bid number twenty-seven ninety-one for liquid asphalt. Anybody got any discussion with that? All right. Second on here will be to approve an agreement to, to the, um, um, statement of work within the master agreement between Limestone County and Engineering Incorporated. Anybody got any discussion with that? All right. Number three on here will be to approve a non-disclosure agreement between Limestone County, EMA, and, uh, VOSI Incorporated. Anybody got any discussion with that?
That's in conjunction with TVA, is it?
I would say, yes, sir. I would say so. There's some things you just can't disclose because of government security reasons. Eddie's not in here today. He can probably speak more than that than I could.
He'd have to kill you after he told you.
Yeah, it would be a non-disclosure. We can't talk about it. But no, it's nothing. I mean, it'd just be, it'd be clearance, just reasons, all reason why you can't disclose something. All right. Any more discussion with that? We have no budget revisions, no purchase purchases, board appointments. We have one reappointment here for Doug Azell to the E nine-one-one Board of Commissions, uh, with said term ending August the nineteenth of twenty twenty-six. Anybody got any question with Doug? All right. No discussion with Doug. We'll move on. Award of bids. We have one bid here with IMS Enterprises for twenty-three cents per notice, and it's for printing for the license commission. Do we have any discussion with that? No discussion with that. Personnel likes him. We have a ton. And I'm gonna ask a question before I get started. Drew, um, instead of going through this in the commission meeting, we'll go through this. Can we just approve the, all the hires in one time and take a motion at each time? We've done it before, I think, in time past.
If, if there are no problems-
There's no problem with anybody who, I mean, that's why, if we have any problem with anybody on there, we'll stop and go through it one. But to save from, because I think we've got fourteen hires, and that way it wouldn't be taking a motion and voting on it every time. So I'll read through them, and we'll go from there. Um, to approve, the number one on here is to approve to transfer Steve Ferguson from deputy assigned to investigations to investigations effective August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Anybody got any discussion with him? And this next one, I'm gonna be sorry right off the bat for pronouncing the name like I'm going to. I'm just gonna go ahead and say it. Um, second on here will be to approve to hire Kiyosha Lenormand, I reckon, as, as a corrections officer, um, effective eight twenty-two of twenty-two pending a drug screening. Anybody got any discussion with that? All right. Number three will be to hire, to approve to hire Dakota Rowland as a corrections officer effective August of twenty-two of twenty-two pending a drug screening. This position will be paid for through the ADPH grant fund. This is the grant that we applied for, for, that Michelle applied for before she left. So thank her. We got three positions where that position is paid for three years, and this will be the first hire on that. So anybody got any discussion with that? Now, we just wanted to-
I know Tammy Waddell worked hard.
Yes. Tammy, yeah, Tammy and, Tammy and Michelle worked hard on that before they left, before she left. And, um, it's been a long time coming, and I know, but that's, uh, that's one of the three hires that's paid for three years for three positions. So, all right. I just want to make that clear. Thank them. Thank both of them for working hard with that. And then also thank Emily and Ellen that's finished it up here. So. And number four will be to approve to hire Morgan Lynn James as a corrections officer effective August twenty-two of twenty-two pending a drug screening. That August twenty-two, twenty-two is getting confusing in here. Anybody got any discussion with her? And number five will be to approve to hire Christina Spencer as a corrections officer effective August twenty-two of twenty-two pending a drug screening. Anybody got any discussion with that? Number six will be to approve to hire Austin Pack as a corrections officer effective, um, August the sixteenth of twenty-two and pending a drug screening. Anybody got any discussion with that? Um, number seven will be to approve to hire Patrick Allen Griffin as a, um, community corrections case manager effective eight twenty-three of twenty-three, uh, twenty-two pending a drug screening. Anybody got any discussion with him? Number eight will be to approve to promote William McGuire from temporary equipment operator one to operator one in the striping crew in the engineering department. Anybody got any discussion with him? Number nine will be to approve to promote Hayden Russell for a temporary equipment operator to operator one in the engineering department. Anybody got any discussion with him? Number ten will be to approve to hire Ryan Pilot as deputy coroner. Anybody got any discussion with him? Number eleven will be to approve to hire Kerry Chambers as a recycling specialist pending a drug screening. Anybody got any discussion with her? Number twelve will be to approve to hire Amanda Malone as a help desk clerk in the license commission office. Anybody got any discussion with her? Number thirteen will be to approve to promote Hunter Gatlin in equipment operator two to equipment operator three in District Three. Anybody got any discussion with him? And that's August fifteenth of twenty-two. Uh, number fourteen will be to approve to hire Brooke Rowland as a network specialist in IT department. Anybody got any discussion with her? And if it's all right with y'all, or no discussion with anybody, we'll take one through fourteen all up in one motion in the commission meeting. If anybody hasn't got any discussion with anybody. And that way it'll save a lot of time and a lot of, lot of heartache and anguish on writing down everybody. So, but all those are all hires. And then our number fifteen will take out separate, which will be to amend the staffing plan to reflect four corrections officers positioned, paid for through the ADPH grant, and this will be July the thirty-first to the twenty-fourth. So, and that was just to go with that grant. So that's the bit of the minimum staffing plan to add those positions. We'll take it separately if that's all right. Anybody got any discussion with anything else on there? Anybody got any personnel issues to discuss? All right. Well, moving on then. We'll go to the merit increases. We have four listed below. Anybody got any discussion with anybody on the merit increase? All right. Engineers report?
Uh, thank you.
We'll let you talk a little while.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I've got, uh, the fiscal year twenty twenty-three county transportation plan that I've, uh, submitted to all of you. Um, and this would, this would include the rebuild Alabama, what's required, uh, for that, as well as, um, as well as our federal aid exchange, which, uh, this year, the federal aid exchange goes to District Three. So that explains why, um, he has, um, has about seven hundred thousand. Uh, so we're gonna, so the roads that we're considering are Jenny's Chapel and Concord Road, Capshaw, Dupree Worthy, Snake, Fielding, and Easter Ferry. And so these will, if, if you guys approve this today, there'll be those, this, this plan and the map of locations from to start, start and finish locations will be, uh, posted on the website for, um, those reviews. And like I said, this has to do with what's required by Rebuild Alabama Act. That we're required by the end of August to, uh, prepare and approve what we're gonna do the following year. And then, um, there'll be some reporting that, the reporting that we have to do talking about our completions and, and the amount of money that we spent, and all that has to be submitted and reported as well. So, so if you have any, if you have any questions about that, let me know. Um, if not, we have, uh, some subdivisions for your consideration, uh, several miners, and I think we've got a couple of, we only have one or two majors. Um, let's say Clement Heights replat of lots five and six. This is a minor for preliminary and final, uh, creating two lots in District Four. Uh, current addresses are seven, six, eight, five, and seven, six, five, nine, Allison Loop. Uh, Barksdale Burns subdivision, this is minor for preliminary and final, creating two new lots in District One. On the east side of Morseville Road, approximately one and a half mile south of Thatch Road. Grigsby Ferry subdivision, this is a minor for preliminary and final, uh, creating eleven lots in District Four. This is the north side of Sammy Lane and south side of Grigsby Ferry, uh, Road. Brigadoon Highlands Phase One, this is a replat of lots seven and eight, uh, minor for preliminary and final, um, effectively, uh, creating one lot in District Three. Uh, and the addresses are, uh, one, three, three, one, five, and one, three, two, seven, nine, St. Andrews Drive. And then the Estates at Piney Chapel, uh, Phase Three, we've actually already approved this one. Uh, they have rescinded that layout. Uh, it had, I can't remember, fifteen, sixteen lots on it. Um, and they actually wanted to make the lots larger, and so this is twelve lots. So this is a minor for preliminary and final, um, changing that to a twelve-lots subdivision in District One. Uh, this is a northwest corner of Piney Chapel Road and Crusher Road intersection. And then we have Abbey Brook subdivision. This is a Phase One. This is major for preliminary approval, uh, with a hundred and thirty-one lots in District Two. And this is the west side of Meadows Road, north of Barksdale Road. And then Briar Patch subdivision, Edition One. This is a major for final. This is fifty-four lots in District Two, east side of Wells Road, about five hundred feet south of Ed Ray. So that's, that's all that I've got for, um, for your consideration as that goes. Uh, we did make some significant progress last week with our striping truck. Um, we were able to go out and, uh, kind of experiment on sandy road with, um, in, in District Three. Uh, we, we were able to calibrate all of our, um, spray nozzles in, uh, calibrate all of our, our bead layouts. And so, um, we're gonna begin this week, uh, going around and finding some roads. We've got to finish and correct Morseville Road, and then, um, we have to, um, then we also have to, uh, I think that, that we'd like to go out and find a few roads, not, not, not high-traveled roads, but, but some roads that definitely need to work. Um, but we, we really came a long way last week, and so, uh, I do appreciate you considering the, the third position in the striping crew. That's, that's gonna be necessary. After being out there with them last week, um, it, it's, it's really gonna be necessary to be able to keep up with, with the traffic control and, and, um, the layouts and everything. So, um, I do appreciate you considering that.
There was that one spot up there at Darrell's. It's like they sneezed when they were going down through there.
Uh, we, we had, that was part of, uh, we had a, um, we had, we had a, a spray nozzle go out on us right when we started, and so it made a mess right there at the beginning.
And it just went everywhere.
What do you do on that? Just leave it, or can you-
Black it out.
Black it out.
And, um, and then re-stripe it. So, um, like I said, we-
Does that mean we get to pave that?
Yeah, we'll just pave that one. But, um, so, uh, we do, but like I said, but that's what we had to get calibrated back in, because we rebuilt all of the, um, all the spray, uh, guns and nozzles. And so we had to calibrate those in and calibrate our beads. So, anyway, I do appreciate Jason letting us go over there and try not to make too big of a mess, but I think it ultimately wound up looking pretty good.
It'll work. It looks good. It really does.
I had a conclusion. It was a gremlin in that truck. It must have been. Like Ghostbusters, that Slimer, that Slimer was in there, and when Slimer come out, that's what happened. So that was, uh-
It was bad.
So that's what hap-
I drove up there just to look at it.
Yeah. Um, we, we had everything working. We were, we were working in the, in the engineering parking lot, and we were spraying, and everything was good. We show up out there, and within about two hundred feet, we, we had a major, had a major mess.
Yeah, it was all the state's fault.
Yeah, that's all right.
They would blame that one on the state.
Okay. But anyway, that's, that's, that's all that I have, um, for, in the way of updates, I guess. If you, you guys have any questions, let me know.
All jokes aside, I, I'm glad we're getting that program going. That'll be a really vital program to the county. And, and I mean, that's one of the gripes we get a lot of times, is people can't see the stripes on the road. Maybe we can get on a rotation to where we can get everything going. So, I want to thank the crew for what they've done. I know they're chasing gremlins, but they're getting there. Anyways, anything else from Mark? Anybody got anything from Mark?
Uh, Mark, you know, we talked about the, uh, I guess rumble strips coming up on intersections. I know I, I've got about, about a half dozen I'd like to get them on.
Yeah. Um, those, unfortunately, those are, because those are thermoplastic, we'll have to get, um, we'll have to get our striping, our, our striping contractor to do those. Um, so, uh, or we can buy the preformed thermoplastic and go out there and lay them out and, and measure and heat the road and everything. It'll take us, it'll take some time, but, um-
Well, I've had some bad experiences. I'm just gonna let you know, we've had to go out and grind them up because the people that live there just hounded and hounded and hounded. So I, I-
It is adjacent to a house. That is what we consider.
I live one little over a mile from the Shaw Road, Ripley Road. When I can sit on my front porch, and I can hear the people hit it.
Oh, I bet.
So I'm just letting you know.
We've got some intersection-
Oh, I know. I did, I do too. I guess, I know what you're talking about.
Like Mr. Watts said, with more-
The faster they go. That's right.
With the area-
Oh, yeah.
We're having more and more accidents.
Yep.
I don't know, I don't know what you do. I mean, we're putting up flashing stop signs.
Yep.
We're, we're, that's the main-
Same thing.
We're trying to notify people and give them plenty of advanced notice. Um, but as people get, as you have more traffic, I mean, your percentage of accidents isn't necessarily increasing. It's just that the traffic is increasing, so you're getting more accidents.
And the better paved road, the faster they go. That's, I mean, that's the truth. I mean, you can sit out there and watch them speed up as a pavement's going down.
Oh, yeah. I would encourage you to go, but look at the accident rate of that intersection before doing anything, because I have a lot of focus calling. That's a dangerous intersection. Where you go back and look, and there's two accidents in two years, it's not. You just got to go back in detail what's happened there before you determine if anything's needed there. Otherwise, you're just putting it there on somebody's opinion.
Oh, yeah.
And that's not-
Well, if you look at the officer's report, most of the time, it's, it's somebody on their cellphone.
Yep.
There's a lot of distraction.
Speed involved. Yeah.
Distracted driving.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's-
I don't know what you do.
The state's having the same issues. I mean, I heard them speaking about how much more people there are, but everybody's going faster.
And you, and the state, the state's going through the same iterations we are. You see more and more of the lighted signs going up, and you see, and they're trying to give people advanced warnings. They're, they're going through the same iterations we are. It's just it's, the more traffic you have, trying to find cost-effective solutions are, are, um, are difficult. And even with that, I mean, short of getting in the vehicle and driving it for them, I, many times, there's just no way to solve it.
And what's crazy is I, I know we don't have a straight of roads, just like Texas does, but I mean, there's side roads that do eighty miles an hour. I mean, it's posted. I mean, it's, you can do eighty miles an hour. Can you imagine doing that on Snake Road or Lucas Ferry, or, I mean, so it's, everybody else is going fast. We're trying to keep it, can't drive fifty-five, so it's, it's bad.
Too many distractions.
Yep.
What I do, like my great-granddad used to, he ordered a vehicle, he wouldn't get a radio, because he said that was a distraction, when he's had to listen to motor on, so. Yeah, distractions.
I can go without the radio, air conditioner, I'm out.
Yeah. Two forty, roll down two winters on forty mile. Um, anyhow, any more discussion from Mark? No more discussion from Mark. We'll move on to other business. We got two items to remove from the, remove the two items from inventory, one from the sheriff's office, one from the jail. Anybody got any discussion with either item? All right. Then, um, number two, I know as I've noted the other day in the commission meeting, Commissioner Black was gonna sell some items on Gov. Deals, and I guess this is what it is. It did, these two items, yeah.
That's those two.
Yeah, them, out of District Three, he's got two items to sell on Gov. Deals. And one of them's a D seven Caterpillar Dozer, and the other one's a platform manly. I've seen anybody got any discussion, or you got anything for either one of them?
Nope. These are, uh, these were, uh, government surplus properties, and they've, uh, we've used them for what we bought them for, and now we're gonna put them back on the market. And we've done this quite a few times. I, I figure this, uh, bulldozer will make about forty, fifty thousand dollars off of it. So see, that goes back in, we can spend it on something else. So it's well worth it when you can buy it and get rid of it and make money off of it and use it.
All righty. Moving on. Um, last thing on other business here, we have to approve February and May twenty-two, any two travel expenses for Jason Black. Anybody got any discussion with that?
Uh, February's the NACO conference, and May was the conference that we had down at the, uh, um-
ACCA.
ACCA. So, and what I had done is I did not want to turn either of these in while I was campaigning, because I didn't want to have a conflict of interest that I was on a business trip when I was campaigning, or I was campaigning when I was on a business trip. So I wanted to make sure that everything I did was on the up and up, and that's why I waited to the last moment to turn those in, because in today's world, everybody's watching. So I just wanted to make sure it was done. So when I got finished with this last conference, I went ahead and did all three, so.
And for the record, the only reason we had to put them on there is it's anything, thirty days out, you have to have commission approval on any business expense. So-
Yeah.
I just wanted everybody to know that's why.
Thank y'all. I appreciate, I appreciate it. I knew it was gonna be that way, but it's, sometimes you just gotta do stuff.
All right. And nothing else for that. We got scheduled public hearings. We have none. Our executive sessions, reports of officers, Commissioner Sammett?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna, Mark, I appreciate you, crew, getting out and getting that light fixed. I know it was a headache on, uh, Thatch and Morseville. Uh, it had gotten hit, house mover, I don't know, log truck, whatever. But, uh, and then we waited for parts. How long?
A month? Yeah, it was a month, six weeks, something like that. Yeah, took a while to get the parts in.
Oh, yeah. And that's, uh, but you can really tell the difference at that intersection. It makes a big difference. I appreciate them getting out there and getting it put back together and working properly. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Sammett. Commissioner Black?
I, I got a couple of things we could talk about now. I think it's gonna tie in later. Uh, the LNS property, uh, Mark and I were talking about the LNS property and about the piece of property, uh, that lies adjacent to the railroad tracks there across from the Sheriff's Department. I think the City of Athens, we had all, uh, kind of discussed and bounced around the City of Athens, has shown interest in buying that LNS property, which, uh, was a albatross before I got in here, and it's since been something that we have great ideas we can do, and we can do these other ideas. But at the end of the day, as Mark was pointing out, you know, if I lived in those neighborhoods up there, I don't want, uh, dump trucks running and banging and dropping tailgates and doing all that. If we can get, uh, an engineering department or something like that set up where we're not in a, a residential area, that area that lies beside the railroad tracks, I think we looked at for recycling and a number of other things we might be interested in. Um, I, I think that might be a, an alternative to us not having to have it downtown right next to a church, right next to a subdivision. So, uh, I was just gonna suggest that maybe in the next couple of weeks, we discuss the LNS property. Um, if, if Mayor Marks and the council really do want it, um, they've got an interest for it. Uh, we've got that other little small piece of property right there on the corner that, uh, that we've discussed in the past about getting rid of. I think it's taken care of now, where it's, it's aside from the, uh, LNS property itself. So what, what do y'all, is that, I know-
How many acres is it?
It's about seven and a half.
But, yeah, yeah. And-
It's about ten over there, the other piece of property.
Yeah, the, the other is what I'm talking about.
It's, it's just under ten. It's like nine point seven five, and I'd say it's right just under ten, the, the one on ninety-nine.
And you kinda, you know, uh, I told him it sounds crazy, but you've kind of blocked off that, that area right there. That's where the jail is. If you need to do anything else over there, excuse me, plus, we got a light. I mean, you're pulling in and out of that equipment and stuff right there where that Eagles Restaurant is and where the City of Athens goes back there, there's a traffic light. You know, we're gonna be in a situation if we're coming in on, on the, uh, Jefferson Street.
Going out, if you're going west or east.
I think so too. I mean, so, looking down the road, I don't think we're look, talking about a whole lot of money changing. Uh, I think we're looking at a little bit of time getting it done right. But, you know, uh, we're gonna have to get out of the location that we're in in engineering ASAP. We should have done it five or six years ago, but we were gonna do this with LNS and do that. And now, looking back, I think the benefits of the City of Athens putting a nice, uh, community storm shelter there, which is one of the things they wanted to do, and do a couple of other things, I think that, that location will be, uh, will be beneficial for the city. We get rid of it, and then we just go do what we want to do on the other side. This might be something y'all want to take up when you get, uh, a new commissioner in here, but I just wanted to make sure that I brought it up and, and discussed it.
Well, the biggest thing about the piece of property that we own, it's like a rectangle, and the other property's square.
Yeah.
You know, and it's hard to deal with a piece of rectangular property when we're trying to build a shop building. I mean, you need to control, you know, your square limits. You can be in the center, and you, you can center up on wherever the other piece of property. And like I said, the city has reached out to me, and I told them we would consider looking at selling it. And I mean, but we're gonna, we're gonna have to, we're gonna buy something back, and so we may do some kind of swapping or whatever with that. But that was, uh, I just, and I'm, I'm fine with looking, exploring it either way.
And I got, uh, I got two more quick things here. Uh, I know that, uh, Danny went and toured the jail, and I know the rest of you have too. I went and did it again. And, uh, there's two hundred and eighty-eight people in our jail right now. It's not, it's, it's not set up for two hundred and eighty-eight people, and we're gonna need somewhere to sleep three hundred and twenty really, really soon. As we grow, our population grows, that jail expansion that needs- As we grow, our population grows, that jail expansion that needs to be done, it's another thing that should have been done a long time ago, but you just keep waiting on this money, waiting on that money. If we can find some of this money that we're receiving to be able to go in there and expand that jail, and the last thing people want to do is spend money to house inmates. They broke the rules, we shouldn't have to do that. I mean, but that is one of the things that our government does have to do. We have to house inmates, and we have to provide a safe place for our employees to work. And if we're crowding these in there, you know, just a few years ago, we had overcrowded in the jail, and a federal judge came in and made us bill what we got up here. I don't want to get in that situation with all these other counties. I don't want to get where we've got one jailer or one corrections officer watching 15, 16 all at one time, and you got one that goes out the door like some other county had recently, and it's a problem. So if we can spend the money to expand the jail today, in three years, you're still gonna need to have it expanded, it's just gonna cost more. If we'd have done it four years ago, we could have done it probably for, I, I don't know, probably $800,000, something like that. I guarantee you now that, that'll be, it'll be double that at this point. So that's that. And then the last thing I have here, I met with the sheriff and Tammy Waddell and the staff there, and they're looking at healthcare for, for the inmates. There's another option that has come in. It's a group out of Birmingham that do a lot of the surrounding counties around here, and they've come in with an option. I think, I think some of the discussions they've had, I haven't seen any of the paperwork, was they came in a little bit higher than the other group, but they provided some services that the other group has not provided us over the years. And if we have a breach of contract with anybody, or they don't follow the rules, we shouldn't have to follow our rules either. And right now, we have some issues with, with our healthcare providers that are not meeting the, the, the contract, but they may be also the ones that got the lowest bid for the next contract. So that, that's something we'll probably be discussing the next couple of weeks, and those are all the things that I've got. That's enough. But we don't have to talk about it in the meeting. We can just fly through the meeting now.
Good deal.
Thank y'all.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right, Mr. Towsen?
Yeah, all I got is I want to thank the engineering department for coming out Friday and doing a little cross-training with my guys on paving equipment. We actually paved the road and Bobcat Lane, and the engineering department came out and helped my guys, and I think it did, I think it looks really good. But I want to thank y'all for coming out and assisting in it. So that's all I got.
All right, I want to thank, you know, Mr. Watts and Mr. Lord for coming in and speaking today, and, you know, and for the public record is, you know, if you can't never make it to commission meeting, a lot of times people can't, you're welcome to email a request in.